Okay, folks, it is 6:00 PM. We're gonna go ahead and get started if we can get to our seats, please.
Testing. Nothing. Barely hear it.
All right, folks. All right, welcome, everybody. We are gonna get started here if we can gather ourselves to our seats. All right, thank you, everybody. We appreciate you getting seated. We're gonna go ahead and get started. It is 6 o'clock. I'm gonna call our meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, May 17, 2023. At 5 o'clock, the council was out in the front parking lot here to unveil the brand-new medic truck that's gonna be stationed at Fire Station 7, so we now have two medic vehicles there. And so we are working on making this city as safe as we can make it, and I want to thank those who attended. There was also no closed session this evening for the record. So with that, we'll call our regular meeting to order now. It is 6:01. And Madam Clerk, if you wanted to ask, have you received any correspondence regarding tonight's agenda?
The council's received a non-agendized public comment in their red folders.
Okay, we have them in the red folder. Thank you very much, and if you don't mind, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Dynas.
Here.
Councilmember Estrada is absent. Councilmember Sobek.
Here.
Mayor Protem Carwin.
Here.
And Mayor Zimmerman.
And I'm here. Thank you. And I saw that we have Pastor Ryan Sharp from Impact Church. I see him. He's making his way to the podium. Thank you, Pastor Sharp. Just for those of you who don't know, he also serves as our chaplain for our law enforcement. So thank you, Pastor Ryan. The floor is yours. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mayor Zimmerman. Good to be with you guys, council members. Always good to be here. You guys may know that May is jam-packed with holidays, right? We just celebrated Mother's Day. Happy Mother's Day belated to all you moms in here. Memorial Day, thank you. That was amazing. I don't know how that happened, but that was great. Memorial Day is obviously happening at the end of this month as well. And even celebrating our law enforcement and the blessing in the air to our community this entire week. And so that's a privilege. Great seeing so many of them here tonight as well. But also, in May, it is National Mental Health Awareness Month, and you may or may not be aware of that. We at our church have been doing a teaching series that we called "Finding It", talking about mental health and recognizing that there's a lot of people who live every day feeling like they're losing it up here, and the importance of that we've been reminded of. And there's 49 million Americans, roughly one out of every five, who deal with a diagnosed mental health disorder. And this is just diagnosed, not including those who feel like they need to go to therapy and deal with those challenges but haven't done that yet. One out of every three adolescents has chronic anxiety and suffers from that. And the statistics go on and on and on. But more importantly, I think everybody here personally has experience, whether it's yourself or someone else that you know and love and care about who has had to deal with the challenges of mental health disorders. And so I thought it'd be appropriate, as we open our time together tonight, and just to invite you guys to pray with me as we ask God's blessing on those individuals and families here in our community and here in Menifee that are dealing with that. Would you do that with me? Let's pray together. Lord, we thank you that you are the God that cares more than any of us could ever possibly imagine. And I think of your word that says, "You keep those in perfect peace whose eyes are fixed on you." We have nothing to fear, as we trust you. God, you are the one that not only made our minds but knows how to heal them and restore them to health. And we just want to recognize those individuals and families today who are struggling with depression, anxiety, trauma, anything related to these. Lord, we ask that your hand of blessing will be on their lives today, that you will bring peace to them and to their families, that you will bring health and wholeness and healing, however possible. And so thank you for our time here. Thank you for everything that we're going to be able to discuss today. And we thank you, knowing that you're here, present with us. We pray all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Sharp. For those of you who don't know, Pastor Sharp was one of the original board members for our Boys and Girls Club and helped put that whole program together. He still serves on the board today. So thank you, Pastor. We appreciate everything you do in our fine city. All right, with that, I'm going to ask Ed Samuelson. I saw him kind of in the back. Ed is a Vietnam veteran. He's also one of our Measure DD Oversight Committee members and a member of our VFW 1956. So Ed, if you don't mind, leading us in our Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Samuelson. So we are now on item five. This is Presentations. I'm gonna ask the council members to join me up front along with the owner of the Ninth Shield is Justin Metoyer, and I'm gonna mess that up pretty bad. Anyway, let's all come up to the front, and we are going to be honoring him. Gina Gonzalez is our Economic Development Director to join us as well.
It's an act of Walsh. If we can separate, maybe put a few officers on the other side as well. That would be wonderful. All right. My name is Gina Gonzalez. I'm your Economic Development Director for this beautiful city of Menifee here tonight to present our monthly Business Spotlight. We are here to recognize the Ninth Shield. For those of you that are unfamiliar with the Business Spotlight program, this is a free business recognition program to say thank you to the businesses that go above and beyond the call of business each and every single day in our big, beautiful city. And so with that, the Ninth Shield is a private security and investigative agency founded by Justin Metoyer, a Menifee resident, who was inspired by his father's legacy. The Ninth Shield is known for peace of mind that they provide to their clients and the community through a wide variety of services that they offer, including skip tracing and asset researches, investigations, locating of people and possessions, canine narcotics and explosive detection, active shooter prevention, security guards, and executive armed protection. Justin found a passion for protecting and serving others just like his father, so he dedicated himself to private security investigations as well as volunteering with first responders. Justin created the Ninth Shield honoring his father's legacy by using his badge number after his father's 17 years of military and law enforcement service. He made Menifee the home for his business as he observed our community's growth, potential, and dedicated work of its civil servants and Menifee Police Department. Justin Metoyer gives back to the community by being an overactive-- I say "active" as not even justify it-- Menifee Police Department volunteer and assisting in creating neighborhood watch teams. We do more than that. And controlling local schools during peak times for an additional layer of protection. Additionally, he's a member of our Chamber of Commerce, and in his part-time, you also recover stolen vehicles and all kinds of stuff in your downtime. Menifee is extremely proud to honor the Ninth Shield, one of Menifee's special businesses that goes above and beyond the call of business each and every day for our Menifee community as our business spotlight. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor, and then we'll roll into the video as part of his honoring.
Thank you, Gina. And what a great choice to have this awesome business. I know we had a chamber mixer, what, about a month or so ago? And that was where I got to meet Justin and his entire team. And I remember you were telling me you started with four or five employees, and now you have how many? I'm gonna ask you to share a little bit about that. But we just wanted to thank you tonight for choosing Menifee as the home for your business. And, you know, hey, there's a lot of crime out there. A lot of businesses need your help to make sure that their businesses are protected and that they're secure. So we really appreciate that you have created this business and you're doing it right here in our town. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to share a few words a little bit about why you started the business here and what your plans are for this city.
Thank you guys so much. I'm really special and feel honored to be up here. A little blown away a little bit. Obviously, I don't do it for recognition, but this is kind of cool. Honestly, I really appreciate everyone being here. Ninth Shield, Gina kind of touched on it. My dad was a Himmet police officer. His badge number was nine. He died of cancer at 45 years old after 17 years of service. So the Ninth Shield is in tribute to my father. That's why we have the Ninth Shield. He was Leo the Lion, so my logo is a lion head, so it's all for my dad. And I kind of want to just kind of just continue on and start my own legacy and honor him. We did move to Menifee, and we started our office off at Bradley. I brought two people in for the office side, about six employees outside doing the work. As of today, we're up to 120 employees. God, 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 you know, all God to me, so it's a big deal. Sorry, okay, sorry. But yeah, it's, to me, you know, Pastor, it's God, honestly. My dad's up there doing things that I couldn't even imagine. He's putting people on my path that just make things happen. You all know who you are. And, you know, it's just, it's a good thing. I don't know. I'm kind of like, I don't know, this is a lot. But we just know with Ninth Shield, you know, we're huge in integrity. We love people. We love just helping out wherever we can. I love volunteering for the Menifee Police Department. I've been in the police volunteer role since I was an explorer at 13 years old for Himmet PD and Rio Hondo Police Academy in 2005. But something about Menifee Police Department in this city, it's different, guys. It's different, and I love it. There's a reason why I show up when they ask me to. Sometimes it's, can you get here now and hurry up? And I do it because of how they are, how they treat me with respect, and I'm learning a lot from them, and I really appreciate the city. My brother Leo started here as Cal Fire. He used to drive Truck 76 for a long time. He moved to Audie Murphy, Leo Metoyer, and he's the reason why I know about this city. So I moved my family here immediately and got involved the second the police department opened up. So we're here. We're not going anywhere. My kids, we're going to Ridgemore Elementary, so we're not, like I said, we're invested in this city. We love this city, and we're not going anywhere. Our plans are just to continue to grow, sir, and help as many people as we can, and many business owners that are out there. We're right here at Bradley and McCall. If you need us, let us know. We do eating and everything, HOA apartments, private shopping centers, all the above, private investigations. I just helped a local realtor today. Had an issue with one of her tenants. We showed up. He wouldn't leave. We got there. He left. He packed up, and now they're able to sell the house. That was literally two hours ago. So we just, it's, I don't know. I can keep rambling on, sir. I apologize. We're just, I'm just blown away. I've never had anything like this before happen to me, honestly. And 42, you know, I'm 42, and this is crazy. So thank you so much. Thank you so much. All glory to God in heaven and my Father. Thank you. My mom's here. My family's here. Beautiful wife. Everyone's here. My neighbors showed up. This is amazing. Command staff, sergeants, everyone. Thank you so much for being here for me. I really appreciate that. If you guys ever had a reason why, my motivation, they're all right here. So that's my little Skylar. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Justin. So we have a video that you can use in social media and things like that. So with that, if we can roll the video and check it out.
I started the Ninth Shield to honor the legacy of a true hero, my father. He was a Marine and police officer for 17 years. His unwavering commitment to keeping people safe inspired me to start the Ninth Shield. We offer a wide range of security services tailored to meet your unique needs. Our team are former military and law enforcement professionals trained to handle any security situation. Call us today to experience the peace of mind of having the best in the business on your side.
Very nice, very nice. So we do have a proclamation to present, but before we do so, I think our chief Walsh wanted to mention a few things. So come on up, Pat. Let's make Pat feel welcome.
So I'm the interim chief. It's my third day, but try not to get fired. No, but we have a great relationship. Every time I've visited since I retired, he's there at the station. I don't know when you work because you're always volunteering. So we have this great relationship between the police department and Ninth Shield, and it is a great town, and we're grateful that you're here and you're keeping us safe. So thank you.
Thank you, Pat. So Justin, this says, "In recognition of your dedication to the Menifee community and your continued commitment, and your entire team, of improving the quality of life for our residents, you're keeping us safe, you're keeping our businesses safe." So we congratulate you. We thank you for being our Business Spotlight of the month. And this is for you to hang on the wall over at your office. And again, thank you, everybody, for being here and supporting this great business. Okay, we're on our next agenda item. This is 5.2. It's still part of our Presentations, and this is our Community Services Update, Think Parks and Rec. And so I will go ahead and turn it over to our team.
Good evening, everyone. My name is LaDysia. I work in the Community Services Department as a community service specialist for our youth programs. And I have the privilege to oversee an amazing program called the Youth Leaders of Menifee. So this program is a high school volunteer-based program. They don't just volunteer. They create, they inspire, they advocate for the youth in the community, and they've done a lot of great things. So today with me, I have our Vice President and President to our Youth Leaders of Menifee. I have, these two young ladies have been with us for three years now, and they start off as regular members. They are the most passionate, inspiring, and just dedicated members to our team, and without them, I think our youth members would need some more guidance. So I appreciate them a lot, and I'm gonna introduce our Vice President and President, Megan Makatangai and Madison LaFlore, and I'll give the floor to them.
Welcome. And I think you can lower that podium. Maybe Mariana can, there you go. You got it.
I'm kind of small, yeah. I got some issues sometimes. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I am Megan Makatangai, a senior at Paloma Valley High School, and I have the honor of being the president of Youth Leaders of Menifee for this school year.
And I am Madison LaFlore. I'm a senior at Paloma Valley High School, and I have the honor of serving as the Vice President of the Youth Leaders of Menifee.
We would like to start off by expressing our deepest gratitude to the city of Menifee for inviting us to present what YLM has been up to for the past year. If you are unfamiliar with the organization of YLM, we are made up of high school teens that either go to school or live in the city of Menifee. Our purpose is to promote public service and community involvement while developing leadership skills, enhancing communication, and building self-esteem and confidence.
I'm gonna move this slightly up. In order to accomplish these things, it's an important preface to know that we work on a divide-and-conquer approach and are comprised of three separate teams: the Green Team, the Teen Team, and the Youth Leadership Team. Each team has its own set of skills and focus, and it allows for our organization to reach all parts of the community and plan successful events across a broad range of topics. This year, the Green Team, which promotes and advocates environmental preservation and beautification, decided to customize the general theme of YLM to be kind to the environment. The Green Team was able to reach out and impact a record number of people through their partnerships with Menifee Park Rangers as well as through interest and engagement of the community. One of the key ways this was accomplished was through various art contests in which participants were challenged to create works of art using recycled materials in order to show their love and dedication to the planet and the preservation of its environment. Participants ranged from young children to local high school students. This, of course, wouldn't be possible without the Eastern Municipal Water District, who sponsored these contests and prizes for the winners. We'd like to express our deep gratitude toward the EMWD for their continued support of the youth leaders. And we look forward to seeing what our successors will accomplish in partnership with them. The Youth Mentor Team also saw record participation in their various events, the most notable being our Youth Fair, Parents' Night Out, tech talks, as well as our after-school program. With respect to the general theme of kindness, the Youth Team encourages Menifee's youth to think of how they can be kind to one another and treat their peers with compassion and courtesy at all times. We, as an organization, were fortunate enough to see this put into practice at events such as our Parents' Night Out, where our Youth Team banded together to provide a safe and fun environment for kids so that their parents could enjoy a well-deserved Parents' Night Out. I'm sure every parent can attest to that right now. Our largest and most unforgettable event was the Youth Fair, which was geared towards youth and teen opportunities. Participants were able to watch local performances from high schools or Menifee businesses, engage with different organizations in the area such as education, athletics, and STEAM, and enjoy crafts all while engaging with their peers and building connections within the community. The last, but certainly not least, of our teams is the Teen Mentor Team, who took kindness into consideration by encouraging the teens in Menifee to engage in acts of kindness towards the community and in their everyday lives, a value all of the officers of YLM hold close to their hearts. This year, we were fortunate enough to be able to participate in a teen-team coalition meeting for the Inland Empire, in which teen engagement groups from across the Inland Empire banded together to share ideas and collaborate on how we could do better in engagement and in planning. This allowed for us to expand beyond just our community and truly learn from other groups in a similar position to us. These tips and ideas were put into practice at our Ready-Set Teen Future Summit, which greatly expanded this year compared to prior events of similar nature. The event was geared towards teens looking to expand their knowledge and opportunities for the next step in life, and we were so happy to see high engagement with each of our guest speakers. Many teens walked away that day with scholarship information, pamphlets, and a newfound confidence in taking the next step in life. In addition to increase confidence in themselves, YLM was also able to bear witness to new and improved connections for our local teens through teen hangouts, in which local teens signed up to go to theme parks such as Six Flags, baseball games, or even hikes with their peers. We saw great helps from the community leaders in advertising these events, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank each and every member of this community for doing their part in promoting and supporting this program. If it were not for dedicated citizens such as yourself, YLM wouldn't be nearly as successful and leave such a positive impact on Menifee. Thank you.
When it comes to statistics, it is easy to say that we have outdone ourselves compared to the previous year. YLM has recruited over 70 members and accumulated over 700 community service hours. We have supported 13 city events and hosted two of our own. Okay, Maddie. One moment. Okay. Some programs and organizations that we have been able to team up with have been Santa's Workshop, the Leukemia Lymphoma Society, Lake Menifee Women's Club, U-Matter, and the Menifee Union School District. We received sponsorships from EMWD and Canes this year. In February, we were given the opportunity to participate in Disneyland's Leadership Training. This event provided attendees with Disney's best practices on leadership skills and customer service excellence. Our officers, as well as the members with the most community service hours, were able to spend the remainder of the day at California Adventure to bond and strengthen our leadership skills through fun games and activities. This year, YLM had our very first open meeting. We invited high schoolers throughout the Paris Union School District to hear their opinion on what they'd like to see from YLM, as well as any questions they might have about the program in general. We encouraged attendees to give us any ideas or suggestions on how we can make our events better and more inclusive, as well as how we could better advertise the program. This meeting helped us gain a better grasp on the people that we were representing in our community. We had over 25 attendees. Throughout this school year, we were able to increase our community involvement by inviting local school clubs such as PVHS's Interact and National Honor Society and LHS's Interact Club to help participate and volunteer at our events. We firmly believe that a big part of our success this year is all thanks to the personal relationships we have established with one another. We have made a conscious effort of creating a positive environment for everyone, ensuring that everyone feels welcome and supported at YLM. We not only work as a team, but as a family. Many often perceive teenagers as rebellious and selfish, but YLM has given the youth an opportunity to learn more about the community that is around them and has encouraged many to get involved. Words cannot express how grateful YLM is to be given the opportunity to serve and represent the community. We hope that the city will continue supporting this fantastic program next year and in the future. Thank you once again, and have a good evening.
Again, that was our amazing program, Youth Leaders of Menifee, and that was our Vice President and President. As you guys can see, I'm very proud of this group. These are some of our top high schoolers who go above and beyond to serve their community, not only do they excel in community service, but they're also athletes, scholars. They do so much for the community, and many of them are presidents and serve on other committees in their school. So they're very involved. So one of the programs that we also have for youth programs is our Teen Awards. So this program was started to recognize those teens in the community who also go above and beyond, and we wanted to give the teachers an opportunity to let us know who those students were so we can recognize them. This is our Spring Teen Awards, and tonight we have our three teen spring recipients. So if I could invite council up here to award these recipients, as well as our Lake Menifee Women's Club. So our Lake Menifee Women's Club actually sponsored us this year. So we have Gloria here, Gloria Sanchez, and Anne-Marie Novak, who are part of our Lake Menifee Women's Club. Okay, our first recipient is an all-star athlete. She is a student from Paloma Valley High School, and she's an 11th grader. Her name is Elsie Sizan.
Go Wildcats!
If I can invite city council, if you guys would like to take a picture. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about Elsie Sizan's award. So Elsie was nominated by her teacher, Ms. Schneider, and so Elsie plays varsity volleyball, varsity water polo, and varsity swim team at Paloma Valley High School. She is powerful in all three sports, but I'll primarily focus on swim team. Elsie participates in multiple swim team events, including the 200 medley relay, where she swims the butterfly stroke, the 100 butterfly, 200 freestyle relay, and the 400 freestyle relay. Elsie exemplifies leadership skills that inspire her teammates and other students. She treats everyone with respect and exudes positivity whenever possible. I'm always impressed with how she conducts herself in the athletic and academic setting. Elsie is a kid that makes sure no other kid is left behind. She includes everyone and makes them feel special, unique, and respected. She balances athletics and academics seamlessly. She maintains a 4.75 grade point average and participates in multiple extracurricular activities, including club volleyball, Girl Scouts, and including club volleyball, Girl Scouts, and ASL. Elsie is the hardest-working student I know, and I am proud to nominate her for this award. Thank you, Elsie. All right. Our next award is the inspiring academic. So this award is for those who over-excell in their academics. So for this spring nomination, our winner is Seth Medina. He goes to San Diego Mission Academy, and he is a soft junior there. He was nominated by his teacher, Nicole Zundle. So a little bit... A little bit about Seth. His teacher's nomination writes, "Despite the many adversities and obstacles that Seth has overcome, he will be graduating high school next year with multiple degrees from Mount San Jacinto Community College. He is working on completing his associate's in physics and liberal arts with full honors as a member of the Phi Theta Kappa International Collegiate Honor Society. He has maintained a 4.0 GPA from MSJC and San Diego Mission Academy and is 96 percentile statewide. He is a member of the National Association for Rocketry. His goal is to work for JPL and wishes to promote free access to STEM to those living in hardships." Seth found out that students at his school were facing hardships and preventing them from having basic Wi-Fi access, so he created a STEM website so that students can have STEM resources 24/7. He eventually wants to earn a spot on the team working on constructing the Mars Landing Rover. Seth has also participated in several volunteer organizations like the YMCA and Trail Life. He served in the Cub and Boy Scouts for 10 years and was part of the Civil Air Patrol Search and Rescue Program. After the Silmer Fire recovery, Seth helped collect clothing for elementary students who had lost everything. Seth's compassion for helping not only extends to humans, but also to animals, as some of his favorite family time has been volunteering at the local K-State Animal Shelter. Remember his name, he is going places. Thank you, Seth. Okay. And last but not least, we have our outstanding citizen award. So this award is to those who go out there and are involved in their community. And this recipient for the spring, her name is Genesis Morales. She goes to Heritage High School and is a senior, 12th grader. She was nominated by her principal, Lindsay Chavez, so... So Genesis Morales is an outstanding student and the face of her patriotic press news. She is a historian and passionate about film production. She is one of our executive producers and hosts our patriotic press news. Genesis moved to Menifee early in her high school career and had to start over where she didn't know anyone. It didn't help that the pandemic prevented her from truly being able to participate in school. Once she returned to campus, she decided to take every opportunity to engage in her community. She attends almost every event and covers it for the patriotic press news. She ensures that the student's achievements is highlighted and celebrated through her work in film. Thank you, Genesis. So I'd like to thank, obviously, our Lake Menifee Women's Club, but also our panelists, who are represented from the Senior Advisory Committee and the Parks and Trails Commission. Our panelists are the ones who help us determine these outstanding students. So I'd like to take a moment to thank them, as well as our teachers. Our teachers are the nominators who recognize these amazing students. So congratulations to all three winners. These three winners are also eligible to win our Teen of the Year Award, which will be awarded May 31st. These, along with our other past season winners, will have a chance to win Teen of the Year and be recognized for their outstanding community involvement and academic achievement, and anything else that, you know, makes a Menifee high school student excel. So I'd like to pass on the microphone to Mariana Mitchell for our community services update.
All right. Well done, Letitia.
All right. I just have a few more updates, but again, like everybody said tonight, we had some really great teens. We've got some great programming for our teens. So if anybody's interested in finding out more, please come out to the Lazy Creek Recreation Center, and we'd be happy to show you what we have. If I could please get the PowerPoint up real quick? Can you get the PowerPoint presentation up, please? All right. So not sure if everybody's aware yet, but this year is a very special year for the city of Menifee. So this year celebrates the 15 years since the city has been incorporated. So what we typically do during the summertime is a series of events at a number of our parks, which has been, in the past, branded as Park After Dark. But this year, we're kind of taking a different approach because it is Menifee 15. So we've identified 15 of our large citywide special events or activities that are open to the public, and we're creating an opportunity to celebrate and prepare for the 15th anniversary or birthday of the city of Menifee. So at each of these events, we will have a booth handing out some themed, collectible giveaways, have some very unique photo opportunities celebrating 15 years of Menifee, and then some opportunities for some of our residents to share their Menifee story about being a resident here, some things that they appreciate about the city, living in this area, or even before it was incorporated. So we are kicking off this Menifee 15 series of events this weekend, so starting off this Friday with our Menifee Moonlight Markets at Central Park, that is going to be on May 19th at 6:00. And then also with our Senior Expo and Wellness Fair, also at Central Park, the very next day, Saturday, May 20th, starting at 9:00 a.m. So we look forward to seeing the public out here at any one of these events. Again, you know, we're going to have some really great items celebrating the 15 years leading up to the 15th anniversary, which we're going to be utilizing Fall Festival as our birthday bash. So we look forward to seeing you guys out there. Next, some additional recreation programs. We want to make sure that the public is aware that we are still taking registration for our summer camp programs. We've got a number of programs for all ages, from preschool all the way to teens, whether it's one day a week, two-day-a-week, all week long. We have pretty much something that can meet your needs, either even with some of our specialty camps, such as sports or art. We encourage anybody who's looking for something to do this summer for their youth to please head over to the city website, and take a look at what we have to offer. Registration tends to go quickly, but we still have some spots. So we encourage everybody to come on down. And then next, we have our Memorial Day event, our annual Memorial Day event, which we are actually starting off this year with a 5K run. So this will be happening earlier in the day. I believe it starts at 7:00 a.m., and we encourage anybody who's interested in getting healthy before celebrating the day to please come on out and register online. And then we will be having our Memorial Day Ceremony at 10:00 a.m. at Central Park. Again, the ceremony includes special presentations, some guest speakers. We typically do a flyover, and again, in memorialization of our veterans who paid the ultimate sacrifice. So we look forward to having the residents out there. And last but not least, we've got some things to celebrate. Just want to make sure the public knows that the long-awaited Lyle Marsh Permanent Park restroom is opening on Monday, May 22nd. So we won't be doing a ribbon-cutting, but it will be open to the public, and it's exciting for us because it is a permanent park restroom that's been, we've been long-awaited for. So looking forward to having that open to the public. Next, for our Park Rangers, we want to make sure that the public knows that our campfire program for the spring has started. It is every Wednesday at Lazy Creek Park at 6:30 with a number of different themes for each week, and we encourage everybody to come on out and participate with our Park Rangers. And then our Park Rangers will also be doing monthly dig sessions. So I know it sounds a little weird because it's a gale web action sports park, but it basically encourages residents to come out and volunteer at the pump track in order to kind of help us rebuild some of the dirt mounds, do some typical cleanup, just to kind of take care of this great amenity that we have in this community. So that typically takes place the first Saturday of every month, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the pump track. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer.
Very good. Thank you, Mariana. We appreciate it. Any questions, council members? All right. Thanks for the updates. Let's go ahead and move on. Yeah. By the way, thank you for honoring those high school students. I know that they've been really enjoying being part of the youth leaders and then being selected. I'm impressed with some of those young people. So anyway, I'm glad we're showing them the appreciation they deserve for all their efforts. So good job. All right. We are now on item six. This is agenda approval or modification. Madam Clerk, do we have any modifications to tonight's agenda?
Yes. Stop is requesting to pull item 10.5 from the agenda this evening.
Okay. So council members, we will pull 10.5. Can I get a all-in-favor of approving as modified? Would you please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Hearing none, our agenda is approved, and now we're on public comments for non-agenda items. This is the time for members of the public to address the council about items that are not listed on the agenda. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time those comments are made. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes on any single item. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak?
I do. I have Gloria Sanchez, followed by Daniel Temple.
All right. Very good. Welcome, Ms. Sanchez. And Ms. Novak.
Good evening. Mayor, Council... That's fine. Do we live in a great city or what?
We do.
I'm just overwhelmed with everything that's going on today. I think it's wonderful. It shows the generations get together and they do wonderful things. That's the positive output. I'm here to remind everyone, again, on our Senior Expo that we're having this Saturday, please come out. We have over 40 vendors that are going to be there. They're all service providers that will offer you information on senior services, which we know are needed. I like the idea. The one thing that the young people forgot to mention is that they also help the Senior Advisory Committee. They're always out there helping us in any way we can. So I just want to remind everyone, we have some flyers in the back. Come out, have a good day, dress cool, wear a hat, and be hydrated. Okay. Thank you.
And Gloria asked me to talk a little bit about our transportation workshop. If you have parents or grandparents, we have senior of transportation available in the city of Menifee. We have no-cost caravans where seniors or disabled can get free rides within the tri-city areas and sometimes farther. You just need to call them up and get the number from our Cases-Narrows staff. Also, we have dial ride and fixed butt rail service and mileage reimbursement. So we have all these options. On Thursday, June 15th, at 10:00 a.m. at Cases-Narrows, you can learn all about these options. And even if you're not a senior, you can learn about them for your neighbors or your family and friends. So we really encourage you to come out, June 15th, to Cases-Narrows at 10:00 a.m., and you'll learn a lot of interesting things about how you can get free transportation. Thank you.
All right. Very good.
Daniel.
Yep. Mr. Temple, welcome.
Hi. Good evening. I know in the few times that I've come here that often at this podium, you hear a lot of complaints, some finger-pointing, issues that people want addressed. I simply wanted to come up tonight and say thank you. My wife and I and our two kids have lived here for 20 years, and initially, Menifee was going to be a stopover until we found another place. And during the 20 years that we've lived here, we've seen dirt roads become paved. We've seen a little more traffic on the roads. We've seen stores built. But we've also come to love our little town here that's grown. And it's been important for me, and I think for many people who live here, to live in a city that honors families, that honors faith, that honors our police and our veterans. And this is the type of place that I've always wanted to live in, and I found it here. So I simply wanted to come up tonight and say thank you. Say thank you to our council members, our mayor, to the city staff for making such a great city where we feel safe and protected by a great police department and feel a responsive council and staff that listens to our needs. So with my few moments here as a 20-year resident of Menifee, I want to say thank you for making our city great. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Temple. Appreciate your kind words. All right. Madam Clerk?
Lawrence Hester, followed by Shelley Hobbs.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Hester.
Thank you, mayor and council members. I want to be as brief as I can because I've got a short period of time. For those who don't know me, I'm a Menifee resident. I have come up with an invention that I wanted to share with the city before next week because I'll be on the East Coast. But you all have this brochure, I do believe, in front of you. What we have invented, I'm the inventor of this. My team is my family. I have five kids. That's my lovely wife right there, Eli Aloha. And we have a master's in education, a master's in construction management. We have a BA. We have a doctorate, and we have a daughter that's in college now. So those are our five kids. Now, this invention does away with the grid problem that we are all aware of. What it does is allow us to have an EV charger and not have to change the grid. Like in a circle, if it's seven houses on the east, seven houses on the west, there's two transformers. If each one of us got electric car, Edison would have to change the grid to change the size of that transformer. This does away with that. It simplifies it. Now, if you look on page eight in your book, there's a picture of the latest and the greatest solar. You don't see any batteries on that, do you? It's in the technology. Meaning, if the city had four of those units out here, it would be getting paid from the bank, from the use of individuals using that particular unit. It's coming from the solar, from the sun. There's no grid. I know it's hard to believe. But this was patented by one of our local attorneys right here in Menifee, and I have prototypes in my garage. So I'm looking forward to... I wanted to share that because I would feel very bad on the East Coast sharing this in Detroit, I've got DC, I've got a circle, sharing this with anyone else. And I know for a fact, in the city of LA, that Flo came in, charged him $220 million for 2,000 units, and what we have here, we... Less than half of the cost to generate one of these. So I'm not trying to sell you nothing. It's a no-brainer. When you read this, you'll see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hester.
Shelley Hobbs, followed by Jeremiah Wade.
Welcome, Ms. Hobbs.
Hi. I've been a resident for maybe about a year. These are my boys, Aiden Guardado and Connor Guardado. You might be familiar with Aiden. He was hit on La Padera and Menifee Road by the car October 17th, 2022. I'm going to start crying. Sorry. I am now a crossing guard at that intersection to try to keep, make sure he gets to school safely, along with the rest of the kids. We got the light turned on. We're still having a lot of issues in that area, and I'm here tonight to ask you for help. I've already asked for the PD. I've talked with them. They're great. They're supportive. The school district is supportive. They're trying to do everything they can, and it's just not happening. I almost got hit four times yesterday. So with my son already, I already reached out. Two days, August 22nd. Three days when school started, asked for help to get more police presence out there. Nothing happened. I spoke to Dr. Root. She was there with me after I got the call. It was ballistic. Mom going crazy, had an anxiety attack right there in the middle of the street, picking him up off the asphalt. He still has injuries that he's dealing with. I mean, when the pasture from impact, I started crying because the anxiety level, he has a nervous twitch that constant for what had happened. He's traumatized crossing the street. I'm trying to get him the help that he needs mentally, emotionally, physically. But I'm here tonight to ask you to help the kids, the students, the ones on the electric bikes that cross the street, and the parents, the community, whoever lives around there. They just drive through. I'll be standing in the middle of the street, and I'm not even there. I blow my whistle as loud as I can. We have... I blow my whistle as loud as I can. We have a huge stop sign that Darla, the old crossing guard, has. And I took it over. I have a great rapport with the kids. I've asked them to stop. There's a few other concerns that we have in the Wheatfield Park to try to eliminate the distractions like the ice cream truck. The ice cream truck's parking on the corner. I've asked them to go to the other side and it seems to work because the cars are turning and they can't see around the ice cream truck. I know that sounds really small, but for somebody who's a mom who just moved here and fell in love with the city and I'm trying to help, I feel like I'm getting anywhere, nowhere, nothing. So, if you can, help me. I'm a mom. I'm sure you guys have kids. And I can't do it alone. So, thank you for your time. I made it three minutes.
All right, thank you for being here and for sharing tonight. All right, I think you said Jeremiah Wade is next?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, fellow residents. Same thing about the traffic. As we've seen tonight, our students, our kids are our greatest resource we have in this town. And we produce some awesome children, but they need to get to and from school. Well, she touched on the e-bikes. I mean, some of these kids are treating the e-bikes like they're motorcycles. They're driving down the road. This, the other day, crossing Newport, there's four kids going to Paloma. None of them have helmets on. You know, the PD can only do so much. I understand. We've got to figure out, I know it's on the agenda later down the year, to do some more bicycle safety. You know, if we can get a Saturday. I mentioned to the previous chief about a Saturday school that I attended for jaywalking when I was in middle school as a way with my dad to kind of kick me on the right path, to follow in the traffic laws. Same thing, anything that we can do. I mean, the other issue is the development. Now, I know that there are projects that were planned years ago before we became a city and projects that I know just a couple of months ago on the planning commission, the one that's gonna be built by Menifee Valley, they talked about, they wanted to change the number density. And so, then the commissioners were trying to get the developer to work with them. It's like, hey, what can you do? You know, we've got these unpaved streets where you're gonna dump all these kids going to Menifee Valley on Garbani and they're gonna walk down the dirt road that the kids cross because we have an ice cream truck there who, you know, the kids do this and the cars go this. And fortunately, now there's a crossing guard. He's not been there every day, but he's there part of the time. So, it is helping. The school district's doing their best. PD's just gotta do a little more. And I don't know if legally there's something to do with, I understand if a development changes, you know. You get like we've got on Evans and Holland, now we got a brand-new light. Awesome. But the light needed to be on Evans and Craig where the pump track is and where the kids all are. Now, eventually, they will all be there when they come from that new development and the kids start walking down the street towards Evans Ranch and they start going towards Menifee Valley. So, that's great that light's there. But we need more lights. We need more sidewalks. I know it, government takes a long time. I mean, we've been talking about that. I moved here in 2001 and we finally started construction on that overpass that we talked about back then. And we all know about the movie theater, you know, so we know how things go. But just anything, you guys just keep pushing, keep trying, and we can all do it. And thank you.
All right, thank you for the encouragement. Any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
Last speaker is Paul McCahey.
Welcome, sir.
Mayor and council members, my name is Paul McCahey. I've lived in Sun City since 2005. So, I've watched this city evolve. The comment that I have tonight seems to be getting worse, but I would like to see something done when it comes to the construction on the roads. And I'll specifically use the EMWD on Murrieta Road. Below there, where they dug up everything on Murrieta Road continuously past Newport and up, I would like to see something implemented in this city when contractors, even developers, come in and tear up a road that it is put back better than it was. I feel like I'm on an off-road vehicle every time I go down there. And you guys will go out and piecework it and patch it, and it shouldn't be your responsibility. It should have been EMWD who started that in the first place. But I see this happening all over. Any contractor that's building a development to go out in the middle of the street, dig something up, looks good. A week later, it's down like that. You hit that bump and it just tears your car apart. So, I'd like to address that issue because I think it's only gonna get worse. And then I just heard the gentleman that was talking about these developments that are going in. Yes, I've watched them. I've lived in this valley for almost forty years, so I've watched the same thing happen down in Temecula. And I do not want to see the same thing happen here. When developers come in, they should absolutely be required, and I'm watching it directly behind me off of Murrieta Road, the Polte Development, Simran, back there. Those exterior sidewalks, streets, and everything should be put in before they're ever allowed to sell one house. Period. I saw the way back in Temecula what happened down there when developments were walked away from, the sidewalks, sidewalks weren't put in, homes half-developed and everything else. I think we need to set a precedent in this city and get those sidewalks and the streets completed before they can even sell one of those homes. Period. I know they're gonna have parks and stuff in it, but that's their responsibility. You can't use a park until the houses are done. But I think we need to start looking at this city the way it is and take care of all those road improvements. Not on your budget, but on the budget of those that tore it up in the first place. Because that's whose responsibility it is. So, there should be some kind of time limit that if it falls apart, they have to come back. No different than a warranty when somebody does any work. And that is my comment in regards to the road issues here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCahey.
No other speakers.
No more speakers. All right, very good. We appreciate everybody taking their time tonight to come and share some thoughts and concerns. We're gonna go ahead now and move to council member updates and comments, and I'll start with Councilman Dynas.
Thank you. On May fourth, I attended the Southwest Communities Finance and Authority Board of Directors Meeting, which is the JPA that built the animal shelter. From the meeting, they approved the budget for the shelters, just a little over a ten percent increase, or about $250,000. It's due to like what everyone else is doing. They need to, they're losing staff, so they had to incentivize the staff to have a real problem with retention and recruitment. So, they had to increase their pay scale to keep qualified staff there as well as everyone else. Their operating costs have gone up, their utilities, dog food, those type of things. The second thing of that is that Menifee now is nineteen point two percent of all animals that are taken to that shelter are from Menifee, which makes us only second, second behind only Lake Elsinore. So, of that budget, nineteen percent is paid by Menifee. So, probably a good time to start looking at ways to educate our residents and try to bring that number down to save us some money. Then on May tenth, the mayor and I had a sphere of influence for the Winchester area meeting and update with the city manager. Also, that same day, I attended the Romeland School District Fentanyl Awareness Town Hall with the mayor and council member Sobek. Very, very eye-opening. They had a panel discussion there and our officer, Terrell, from our pop team was there. Gave us a lot of good information, some of it a little concerning, but it was very educational. And I appreciate the Romeland School District for putting that on. You never quite, unless it happens to you, you don't think it's, that it's here in our city that much. But it's amazing how that kind of stuff travels and how young our kids are that are exposed to it. Then on May the eleventh, we had a finance committee meeting where we looked at two future CFD bond issues, which will be coming to the council in the future. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, councilman. Councilmember Sobek?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna report out on a few things that I've been able to do. First of all, I, along with the mayor, attended, and our county supervisor, attended the National Day of Prayer event that we had in the city. I just want to thank former Senator Morel, who was there and our keynote speaker. He shared a book called The Road of Restoring the Family. He, as a senator in this, from the state of California, recognizes that many of our problems that we have in society today is a breakdown of the family. And so, as he retired, he decided to write a book, Letters to His Children. And this is something we've heard a little bit about tonight, but I'm passionate as well is where you have strong families, you have a strong community. And we just need to be able to remember that as parents, as grandparents, as neighbors. And we saw a lot of great things from the youth tonight. How proud I am of the youth in our city. So, this was a great event. There were prayers. It's a national day. It's done all over the United States. They pray for national leaders, state leaders, and local leaders, as well as our education, our medical, our youth, et cetera. It just goes down the list. So, great day in Menifee that morning. I attended my, as one of my responsibilities on the RCHCA. And I want to share this with the public. I put it out on Facebook, but we were asked as board members to get this word out and to talk to our public works in our city, parks in our city. Let our residents know that the stink net weed really, really spread during this rainy season. And it's just awareness. If you happen to see it in your yard, get rid of it. It's evasive. It hurts our food chain. It hurts our, our animal life and plants. It's, it's hurt some of the bee population in our area because of, it smothers out some of the native plants that need to be here. And so, it's stink net. Get rid of it. If you see it in your property, just an awareness of that. So. This morning, I had the opportunity to attend the Santa Rosa Academy. There are seniors, there are top ten seniors that will be graduating and leaving. And it was a great pleasure to represent our city council and provide certificates along with our county, our assembly member, county supervisor, and senator, and also our congressman. I attended also the National Letter Carrier Day. And this year, they, last year, 1,000 pounds. This year, 18,000 pounds. So, thank you to our residents. Last year, it wasn't advertised by the Postal Service, so thank you to the Postal Service and for those residents who donated for our community cupboard. All of those donations stay within the city of Menifee. As, as Councilmember Dynas said, I attended the fentanyl awareness. Thank you for the Romeland School District for doing that. They showed a little documentary. Just like to share that information. It was very educational. It was called Dead on Arrival. I would highly recommend that for a little bit of education for anybody who wants to find out about, more about fentanyl and the problem that it is in our society and in Riverside County. Again, I attended the finance meeting with Dean Dynas. And, you know, tonight, we heard some comments and I wish we could have commented. We're not allowed to comment on things that aren't on the agenda, but we do have, we have addressed some of those things. And a thought that came to me, to city manager, is when that woman was talking about her son and the sidewalk safety and school safety, I thought she would be a great PSA for our police department to put something out. I don't know if there's something we can do like that, but it was just a thought that came that it might be a great opportunity for a parent, talking to our parents and somebody who really experienced that. But also tonight, in the audience, before we started, I just, I met some great people. We've got an Olympian here tonight. We had students here. They're from the high school. But I met Keith Anderson and I just want to say, he was, he let me know he was banker of the year for US Bank. So, just welcome to the city council tonight. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. And Mayor Pro Tim Carwin?
Thank you. Just a few things to report on. I attended, I think, Councilmember Sobek and they were both there at the Giovanni's Ribbon Cutting. They expanded their restaurant, so if you're a lover of Italian food and have been to Giovanni's, they've streamlined the process. They've got the same great menu, but now it's a beautiful, larger, new facility, more modern. I represented the city at the Rotary Club meeting. Got to attend that. Some great things planned for charitable acts coming up in the future. I went to the Case-Nacero Center for our Menifee Arts Council Art Affair, which was great. I saw Councilman Estrada there. I know that he came, he was there about when I was. And that was great, seeing a lot of the local artists up there and a lot of the things that they produce, both art and there was music. It was, it was a wonderful event. So, if you get another chance to go, go. This morning, I was with the mayor at the Chamber of Commerce Wake Up Menifee at the Cherry Hills Golf Course. Got to update the community there on some things that are happening. And then at five o'clock this evening, all of the council members who are here were out christening the new meta truck that's out there. Is it still out there? Is it still parked out there? No, they got rid of it. It's beautiful. It's shiny. And it's gonna be servicing our community immediately, so it's in action. Thank you to Chief Olson for spearheading that effort and getting us some great community service. And that's all I've got.
All right, very good report. I'll try to be brief. This is since our last meeting on May third, on Thursday, May fourth. I attended the National Day of Prayer and gave the prayer for our service organizations and our faith-based organizations. On Friday, May fifth, I attended the Murrieta-Temecula Group Meeting and the topic was regional branding. And then later that evening was Foodie Friday over at MSJC. And it was a nice evening with live music and great food. There was thousands of people in attendance. That just keeps growing. And then I went over to Arts Council's Menifee's Got Talent Event, and that was held over at Liberty High School Theater. And there was about almost thirty different performers. So, it was a great show. We have a lot of talent here in town. On Tuesday, May ninth, there was a chamber ribbon cutting, as mentioned, over at Giovanni's that I attended. And then on Wednesday, May tenth, RCTC Commission I attended, and it was held out in Coachella Valley. We're trying to spread out those meetings from downtown Riverside to Coachella area for the, all the cities that are out in the desert. So, this time I had to do the driving. And then there was a Sphere of Influence Subcommittee. Councilman Dynas and I met. And also that Fentanyl Awareness Town Hall, I did also attend that. And thank you to Romeland School District, Chase Middle School. On Thursday, May eleventh, there was a mental health fair over at Central Park that I attended. And just wanted to thank the Riverside University Health System. They had probably fifty booths that were there. There were, there were live performers. It was just a really nice day for our You Matter people to be able to be there and speaking with all of our residents. And so, thank you for everyone for helping put on the mental health fair. On Friday, May twelfth, there was a business battle that was also held over at Liberty High School. Gina Gonzalez was one of the panelists judging all of the young high school students that were proposing their business plan. They all put together a prospectus and then they had to sell their business idea and ask for funding. And it was just a great opportunity to see our future business leaders, so many of them being entrepreneurial. All right. On Monday, the fifteenth, Blitzer's is our local frozen yogurt place. She, Rhonda Kop is the owner of that business and she has an event for kindness and she has a kindness campaign. And so, they awarded two schools. One of them's Evans Ranch Elementary. And so, I got to go there and cheer on the kids for all their good efforts. And then tomorrow, I'll be going to Bear River Springs for a similar opportunity to thank the kids for winning their kindness award from Blitzer's. On Tuesday, May sixteenth, that was yesterday, right? Was that today? Today's Tuesday. Today's Wednesday, so I got it all mixed up on my notes here. But there was a chamber wake-up over at Cherry Hills Country Club. And Councilman Carwin, you did a great job providing updates to the community about things that are happening here. I wanted to make two quick announcements. This Saturday at nine thirty, there's a history program at the Antelope Menifee Rural Center. And it is gonna be kind of informal and it's gonna talk about Sun City and the Rancho Ramona community. That's the other side of the freeway from Sun City on the east side from back in nineteen sixties and seventies. And we've got a slideshow of things like today, there's a Chase Bank right there on McCall Road. But back then, it was a tasty freeze. And, and so, there's lots of different things that we're gonna be remembering and it'll be an open session. So, if you've lived here for a while and you remember some things from the past, Saturday, nine thirty at the Rural Center, everyone's welcome to come. There's also the Senior Day that same day. And so, when we get done with that, we're all gonna go over to Central Park and cheer on all of our seniors. Otherwise, Gloria will strangle me if I don't come. All right, and that's my report. Anybody else have anything else to add? Hearing none, let's move on on our agenda. This is item nine, approval of our minutes. We have two sets of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. May 3rd, special meeting, and May 3rd, regular meeting minutes. And I believe there was a couple of modifications. Councilman Dynas noted spelling of his name, and also where it notes that Councilmember Sobek and I went to the state of the city at MSJC, who's actually state of the college. So, we'll just modify those. Councilmembers, all in favor as modified of those agenda meeting minutes? Would you please say aye? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, our minutes are approved as modified. Let's go to item 10. This is our consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are to be approved in one motion unless a council member requests a separate action on a specific item on the consent calendar. If an item is removed from the consent calendar, it'll be discussed individually and acted upon separately. And I'll remind the council that we did remove item 10.5 from consent. So, do we have any other items from consent that we'd like to pull for discussion?
Mayor, I would like to pull 10.3.
10.3? Okay. Any others, councilmembers? Can we get a motion to approve the balance, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, do you have a public comment on 10.7?
Okay.
Paul McCaughy.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. McCaughy. I should have asked that question. Please come to the podium and welcome. Welcome back.
Thank you. It's still me.
Yeah. And let me, before you go, just so everyone knows, 10.7 is Landscape and Lighting District for collecting the fees for those annual assessments.
That is correct. The issue that I wanted to bring forth is, I live off, I live in Zone 38, which would be the Sun Ranch Home Community. And initially, what I wanted to do was address, when I saw this landscaping thing on there, I have been in contact with this city probably ongoing for about nine months. And I didn't want to, it would have taken a lot more than three minutes for me to print out all the emails and everything and answers that I've gotten. But I've been a constant complainer on the landscaping in this city, especially from McCall to Ethanack, Myriad Road in particular. And I would say, just drive it. And that's just that road itself. But in particular, the, what I want to address is in Zone 38, in my particular one, is I noticed that there is going to, what you're looking at is assessing $208 inside of our tract, 230 something homes at that dollar amount. My issue with that is, is since I've done the complaining, nothing has happened on the outside of our, you can say it has, but I've got pictures documenting just about every two weeks through the last nine months of the landscaping around our tract of homes. Nothing's been done. We originally took care of it in our HOA, and it looked a lot better than when the city took it over. So, my comment on this is going to be, I'd like to see this table, especially for Zone 38, because if you're going to assess $208, I could almost take this money and bump, I'm one of the members of the HOA, and add $10 onto our residents and tell them what it's about, and use our own landscaping services and get it back to the way it was before for less money than we're going to be assessed. And this is no guarantee. When I looked over your budget on this, I noticed that it was under maintenance personnel with $7,326 in '22 to '23. That's being cut down to $2,307. Now, I'm, I'm just using common sense here. That just tells me that the manpower is going away. Would that now be correct, from 7,000 down to 2,000? That's telling me there's going to be less man hours. Well, that's not going to improve the landscape, and it's going to make it worse. So, when I look at all this and the things that it's, and the pictures of everything that was going to be done, nothing was done, and it took me a fight just to get our palm trees trimmed at the entrance of our tract. That took six months to get that done. And it was ugly that we had one that was falling over after the city took it over. So, I'd like to see this tabled. I'd like to be able to go to and have the, us especially in Zone 38, go back to our HOA and see if our residents want to take that whole thing back over again and put it back under our HOA and our landscaping services. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCaughy. Possibly, our Public Works Director might be able to speak with the outside and get a little better direction on that. All right. Councilmembers, I think we do have a motion and a second for the balance.
Well, in light of those comments, I think I'd like to withdraw my second.
Okay.
Am I, am I able to do that? Since there was comments, I'm going to, I'm going to withdraw my second and ask that we, I'm, let's see, would I need to pull 10.7 to vote separately on it? I'm going to ask to pull 10.7.
All right. I think we can do that, right, Ajit?
Yes, that's, that's fine. Maker of the motion, I think, is okay with that.
Who made, and who made the original motion? Dean, did you?
Dean made the motion to approve the balance.
Yes, and I'll add that to my motion.
All right. So, now the balance does not include 10.3 or 10.7. Can we get a motion to approve the new balance?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Thank you. And that passes four yeses and one absent. So, let's go ahead and take our first polled item, which is our monthly public safety reports. Councilmember Sobek, did you have a question or did you want to report?
I just have a couple of questions. One of them would be for fire, and then, one would be for code enforcement. So, you want to take it? Chief Olson, you want to take my first question? Last month, I asked for if we could get an update on Station 68 and Station 5 in their, Station 5 in the building and Station 68 in the update of the, the building there.
So, our Public Works Director is going to come up and help me out, but I'll, I'll start it off, and he can finish it with Fire Station 5. So, Station 68 is complete. The firefighters have all moved back into the building. There's some, some minor touch-ups work that's being done, but they are back living in the building, and it is complete and now capable of holding up to seven personnel. For Station 5, I will allow Nick Fiddler to answer that.
Thank you. Councilmember Sobek, correct. Station 68 is essentially complete, where we're just working through potentialist items. There was some minor corrections that the contractor needed to do. The staffing has already moved back into that station. With Fire Station 5, we are working on underground, electrical underground. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the today's update meeting, but Carlos Geronimo, the principal engineer for CIP, could show you exactly where they're at. But I know they're, they're doing all their underground infrastructure. And Carlos, if you want to provide a more detailed report.
Sure. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. So, we are about 20% completed on the project. As Nick said, we're doing the underground utilities, all the conduit installation. And they'll be starting to form the footing soon to, to start going up on the structure. We're also coordinating with the MWD, SCE, and other utility companies to connect the appropriate utilities and, and other items for the fire station. So, it's coming along good. We're still on, on schedule to finish the project by the end of this year, towards November or December of this year, we should have that fire station wrapped up.
That was one of my questions, if there was a rain delay that caused, the rain caused a delay this last year, so.
It did. When they were doing the underground work, they were trenching, and then the rains happened, and they had to wait until those trenches dried out. So, it caused a few days of delays, but not, nothing significant.
All right. Thank you. And then, Station 68, you said it's able to hold seven personnel now. Are we looking at expanding that anytime soon?
No. We'll do evaluations, and when the call volume within the area requires additional resources, I'll be sure to work with the city manager to make, make those decisions.
All right. Okay. Thank you. And, wait, one more. Calls, calls going out of the city. I see that we're getting more and more calls out of the city on our mutual aid. You always tell me, mutual aid. But that is, how, when does, when does that affect us? Because it's our taxpayers' money, our residents paying for that, and, and the mutual aid isn't coming back in. We don't need it as much. It's really the east, all that development out in the east is really, is it taking our, our firefighters, our medic patrols out of the city. So, when do we get concerned about that mutual aid and our taxpayer money and how it affects us?
So, with all of the construction that's going on to the east, we are, we are paying attention to all of that and engaged in, in working through plans with the county for budgeting to increase fire services in those areas. One would be, we're expanding the fire station there in the Winchester area, as well as evaluating strategic locations for additional fire stations along that 79 corridor as that continues to develop out for that large plan that's going in for that area, as well as looking at additional staffing out of the French Valley Station in the interim to mitigate that until those fire stations and areas build up.
Okay. So, I know, I've asked that before. So, they haven't found a location yet for a fire station out that way?
They have not locked in or purchased a, a property, correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, and thank you for all you do for our residents and the new medic patrol today. That will just be a great blessing for this, for Sun City residents and to help, help keep our response times down, so.
Thank you to the council for all your support.
Thank you.
All right. We'll need a motion to receive and file the reports.
My other one was for, was for...
Oh, you have more questions?
Yeah, just was for code, code enforcement. So. It just has to do with weed abatement. I know we're getting on the season. I know that I'm starting to hear from residents about the weeds around the city. Maybe you can give us an update on when the letters go out to property owners and when they need to be done by and what the city is doing.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, mayor, city council. Captain Dave Gutierrez with the Police Department. I oversee investigations and support services, which also includes code enforcement. To answer your question, all the weed abatement letters from code enforcement have gone out, and those individuals have until the 31st of this, this month to come into compliance. And if they don't, then we'll begin the abatement process.
So, they have until May 31st, and if they, if, if residents don't do that, our property owners, we then go out? And then, how does...
We, we will start to issue citations, give them a little bit more time, and then, within a few weeks, we'll begin, if we still do not see any movement on those properties, we'll begin the abatement process. We'll, we'll use our, our contracted vendor to abate the weeds.
And then, they get billed?
And then, we bill the property owner.
All right. All right. So, I know that's important for fire litigation.
Absolutely.
So, what is the city doing in the public right of ways? What are we doing to address the weeds that are coming up all over the city in our sidewalks, street cracks, mediums?
I think, when, when we, go ahead, sir.
I think we can take that one. I know, I know Nick is out there, Nick, talking to Jonathan, but, you know, we do, we do have a program. Some of our street workers have actually gone out and done the, the weeding on most of a public, most of the public sidewalks. And then, and then, a couple of months ago, and then it rained some more, so we got more weeds. But they do have the intention of going out over the next few weeks to try to attack that problem. The problem is, is not a problem unique to Menifee, it's unique to mostly Southern California. Every city is, is going through this. We just had a lot of rain and, and a lot of, a lot of the sidewalks that are cracked a little bit, they, you know, they get seeds in there, and before you know it, you get weeds growing out of those things. So, we are trying to come up with a more comprehensive approach. I think, you know, we're trying to spray some of that weed, weed killer, making sure that we use something that's safe so that we only have to take care of the problem one time and not, not many times. But Nick, do you want to add more to that?
Yeah. Thank you, Armando. So, as Armando has mentioned, we, we have had three to four staff members throughout this season mowing on a regular basis. The problem has, is that we continue, we mow, it rains, it grows. Mow, rain, grow. It's been constant this year. We've mowed some areas two to three times, and two weeks later, it looks like we haven't even been there. So, we do, we're, we're trying to build up our arsenal to combat it. Right now, we, we don't have staff that is trained and certified to spray herbicides. So, I have staff members that are going through the training process. We're hopeful that in June, July, they'll get certified. We're working on acquiring the proper equipment to, to spray pre and post emergence within the public right of ways to help prevent further growth. Next year, we'll get in, ahead of the program, and we'll be spraying pre-emergence prior to the, the weeds developing. But it, like Mr. Villa's indicated, this year has been very challenging. If you remember, last year, I only had four staff members. This year, I'm dedicating what would be essentially the same, full-time, to doing just weed abatement.
So, if a resident has a complaint of a medium, like I'm getting, can they report that on the city app? Is there a place to report weed abatement on the city app?
Yeah, yeah. That we, we get abatement, or we get requests all the time through the city app.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for that. I know it's a tough year for weeds, so I just wanted to find out, we just got to get them down, dude, we know, fire season's around the corner, so. Thank you for Public Works.
We're continuing. We're also coordinating with Caltrans, trying to, to clean up our, our on-ramps. We've reached out to them a few times. We want to do it at the same time, so we don't get comments. But our staff has been trying to do our areas within the on-ramps, but we'll do a, a massive cleanup together, so we can get the whole interchanges going as well.
Okay. Thank you for that very much, Public Works guys, for doing what you can. And so, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve 10.3.
Okay. And I know there's discussion also from Councilman Dynas on this.
Thank you. I had to follow up for Nick on, I'm getting a number of emails and questions regarding, like, Menifee Road, where, where, you know, the, the weeds are coming up in the middle of the street. Does my understanding then that we don't have anyone that can go out there and spray those right now?
That's correct. Unfortunately, due to regulations, you have to be certified in order to spray herbicides. Otherwise, we have to hand-pluck them or mow them with a weed eater. So, obviously, those ones aren't nearly as bad as the four-foot-tall ones on the side of the road. But our, our, our goal is by next year to be in front of those weeds that are out in the roadways, and we can spray, we're going to get a, a piece of equipment that has a spray bar on it, they can drive along in a truck and, and spray the weeds, and, and also along the curb fronts on the mediums, edges.
Okay, great. At least I have something I can go back to the residents and tell them that, yeah, we're aware of it, we're working on it. You're opposed to saying, well, we'll get back to you. That's great. Thank you.
I'll second the motion to receive and file. Let's go ahead and cast our votes. That passes four yeses and an absent. Let's go to item 10.7. This is Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District 891C. This is intention to have proceedings for the levying collection of those assessments. In other words, we're setting the date for a public hearing on June 21st. So, that's what this item is, to set that date to have a public hearing. Councilman Carwin, you polled the item. What's your pleasure, sir?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions on it. Who would be best to, Margarita, is that going to be you? So, I just want to make, make sure I understand what we're voting on here today. So, the assessments that are in this staff report are proposed, and we're asking, this is, this is an item?
I'm listening.
That's all right. So, so today, if, if we vote to approve this, it's to place it on the full agenda for a full public hearing?
Correct. So, this is the initial process by the Lighting and Landscaping District. We're required to do a resolution of intention, which is what's being proposed today. It's draft engineers' report and proposed initial assessments, but this is finalized in a public hearing. Our recommendation would still be to proceed with that resolution of intent today, specifically because there is a cutoff, cutoff date for submitting these assessments to the tax roll, and that's in the early parts of August. So, today's action would initiate the process, but not finalize it. So, today's action would initiate the process, but not finalize it. So, it gives us an opportunity to follow up with the resident concerns before June 21st, ideally to have that resolved, or if we need to move the public hearing to a little bit later, we can still do that, but at least the resolution of intent to move forward that would be initiated today.
Okay, so, again, just to be absolutely clear, us approving this item today isn't us approving these assessments, it's us approving it to get it onto the agenda so we can look at the assessments in greater detail.
That is correct.
And the public would have an opportunity to comment at that point on the assessments.
That is correct as well, so, yes.
Very well, thank you very much. Any other questions on it? Nope. Based on that, I move to approve the item.
Second.
All right, that passes with four yeses and an absent. Let's go now to item 11, is public hearings. There's none, there's also no discussion items, number 12. So, Mr. Thinn, do we have anything to report, sir, from our attorney's perspective?
Nothing to report, but just nice to see you all. It's been too long, and I'll tell Mr. Melching he should go to more conferences, so I can cover for him.
Thank you for filling in tonight. Mr. City Manager, item 14, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor and Council. I have two, two things I want to report on, is first, I'd like to, to welcome back Pat Walsh. As you know, you got to see him earlier today. He's, he's been asked to fill an interim position as Police Chief, so Pat, I don't know if you want to come up here and say a few words, but on Monday, I talked to him, and, and he told me that he was glad to be back, that he asked his wife, Kat, it was okay, and she said, "Get the hell out of the house." So, I don't think that she was excited about that, I think she was happy to see you out of the house, Pat.
I didn't even finish the question, and she said, "Yes, go." I don't know what I'm doing wrong. No, I'm happy to be here, and all, all day Monday, and, and Tuesday, I got up to speed. You know, the team came in and gave me a great briefing, and good things are happening at the PDE, and just real proud of them, I'm happy to be here, so if you need anything, I'm here.
All right, welcome back, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And the second, Mayor, I just wanted to take the time to show you the latest award, and I know that you know that the city is an award-winning city. This is for the Planning Department, as they rolled out their Menifee Permit Ready ADU program. It caught the attention of the American Planning Association, so they were lucky and received this award for their proactiveness and, and their actions to, to implement some, some of the housing requirements the state is putting on us, so, so they are being proactive, so I'm just very proud of them for being in that award. Thank you.
All right, congratulations, Chief.
Congratulations.
Mr. Villa, we're still set for budget adoption on June 7th, is that correct?
That's correct. We're gearing up for budget adoption.
All right, very good. All right, councilmembers, do we have any items that we'd like to request for future agenda? Hearing none, we're going to adjourn. It is 7:30 on the dot, and that was our goal, so I hope everybody has a great night. Thank you all.